To order, this is a staff meeting of the Hamilton County Commission, February 18th, 2025. We've got a couple of really important presentations this morning. There is a nexus between the two. I want to say that that was on purpose, but I'm not sure it was. But anyway, here we are. But it's really important that we hear the information because as policymakers, we need to have good information to work off of as we create policies to the benefit of the community, especially the vulnerable populations in this community. And so with that, we're going to do closing the wealth gap first. Wendy Ellis is here.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to do introductions, Commissioner. I appreciate those reminders.
I always, always forget introductions. So we're going to introduce ourselves first. So Chrissy, we'll start with you.
Chrissy Rochelle, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Alicia Reese, Hamilton County Commissioner.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm Commissioner Denise Dreyhouse. With that, we are going to move to Wendy Ellis. She is here to make the presentation regarding closing the wealth gap. She's got a team here. And Wendy, I'm going to let you introduce the team. I think it's important that everybody get acknowledged because the work is a collective effort amongst the group. So if you would do that first and then launch into the presentation.
Yes, absolutely. So, good morning and thank you again for this invitation. I want to introduce my team that really is collective, not just of George Washington University, but a number of local community coalitions who have been working with us for over 10 years here in Cincinnati to really think about what is, how do we build community resilience? And how do we measure that? And that is looking at root causes. So that's what we'll talk about this morning. I first want to introduce my local partner, the President of Joining Forces for Children, Tom Lotman. Joining Forces for Children is a coalition of multiple agencies here in the city that have been really working at trauma-informed practice and care and prevention of adverse childhood experiences. Next to Tom is Lauren Forbes, who is the Policy Director. Dr. Lauren Forbes is also at University of Cincinnati, and they've been an important partner in this work as well. And then to her right is Bishop Tate of Tate Ministries. He's been with us for almost five years now, working with us side by side and doing this work here at the community, and particularly in Avondale. And the right behind them, if I can see around the corner, is Kate Wolf, who is the C, Kate Wolf and Grace Epperson, I think, if Grace can raise her hand over there. They are the co-CFOs of the Opportunity Dashboard, which we will talk about in a moment here. And then Purva Trevadi, who is our Policy Analyst from the Policy Lab that is at the Institute for Racial, Ethnic, and Socioeconomic Equity, of which I am also a Director of. And then Daniel Chen, who is with us from both the Equity Institute, as well as the Center for Community Resilience, and the Resilience Innovation Lab. So you can see, we've put a lot of resource into this work here in Cincinnati.
All that done without notes in front of you. And let me say too, that the first time we were introduced was on Martin Luther King Jr. Day. You were at the Freedom Center as the keynote speaker.
Yes.
And so the information was very impactful. And so we felt it would be important to share with the community.
I appreciate that. And as I shared at the MLK Breakfast, I am here not as an academician, but I'm here as a hometown girl. I grew up here in Cincinnati. It was very important for all the work that I'm doing across the country to bring it home to Cincinnati. So I grew up in Kennedy Heights, went to Wana Hills High School. And so it is my honor to bring this very important work back to Cincinnati. So let's get into this. The Closing the Racial, the Closing the Wealth Gap Study, which you all have a hard copy in front of you, is the culmination of 10 years of work that we've been working with community members across the Cincinnati region to really understand what are the root causes of adversity and the opportunities to close important gaps. And at the end of the day, most of our adversity in the city really does come to economic inequities. So poverty in itself is an adverse childhood experience, as well as experience of not being able to access the resources that are so important for our children and families. So with, okay, let's see. Does this work? Can you advance for me? I'm not sure this is working. Thank you. So as I mentioned, all of our work is community-based, is community-based. And so it was really important for us to think about and drill down and understanding what is the root cause for many of the adversities that we see in our communities. And this graph is just really to highlight what all of you know in this room, that Cincinnati has had historically, reliably, and unfortunately, predictably, some of the highest poverty rates, not just in the state, but really amongst Midwestern cities. And when we really started to drive down to understand the patterns and the history behind the poverty in Cincinnati, it has a lot to do with our Appalachian and low-income Black communities that have been historically uninvested or disinvested in. And so we wanted to drill down specifically and begin to understand how could we begin to address the economic inequity. This work represents a very specific and intentional work that we did in Avondale, as well as Riverside, to understand what were the drivers of financial instability in families? And what was the vision? Where do you want to go? And how do we go about doing that? So while you may have very disparate populations when you talk about Riverside versus Avondale, one low-income, historically low-income Black, one historically lower-income white, the systems drivers are the same. And so this causal loop diagram here really represents the voices, the experience of residents in those communities, but also the vision. What do they want to achieve? Well, when they talked, they both talked about thriving next generation. How do we invest in our young people, in our families, in our community, so that we do produce a thriving next generation? At the same time that we were doing this research, Mayor Purva released his financial blueprint. And out of that, he had these three pillars, which was very congruent with what we were hearing from community. This need for economic mobility, this need for financial stability, and financial security. And so we use that as a framing, not to supplant what the mayor had already built, but to actually demonstrate how that coordinates and aligns with what we're hearing from community, but also the opportunity to implement and activate what is a report, the blueprint for freedom, to really thinking about, how do we do this tactically? So we recognize that there were opportunities for public-private partnerships, and the importance of being able to demonstrate the return on the investments. It's not just that we're doing this for social good, although we should, but we also recognize that when you invest, we have to demonstrate what is the return on that investment. And so for that, we created this framework for implementation. On page seven of the report, you'll see a little bit more about the opportunities for action, but what it really starts with is an investment in place. And why place? As I demonstrated on that first slide, you saw the disparities that you see from place to place, whether that's in Cincinnati or across the county. And so understanding that if we start with place-based investments and be really strategic about what does that community need, whether that's educational investments or financial investments, resource, these resource hubs can really begin to offset what have been some systemic disinvestments. Then we get to building on that hub with access to credit and financial services, then policy pieces that help us to create guaranteed basic income or debt management that ultimately get people to a place of asset building. So it's not just living paycheck to paycheck, but how do we begin to build that runway so that families and children can take off, as we, as they said in their words, the thriving next generation? Understanding that this is not something that the city can do alone, or that the county can do alone, we have been working with and had conversations with, say, JP Morgan Chase, which is interested in making place-based investments in communities so that we can begin to have access to banking, something that is fundamentally important for many of our unbanked, which also coordinates with, or is associated with many of our people who are unhoused, as you'll hear from the second presentation today. But giving those baby steps of getting people up that financial ladder is absolutely important to getting to the pathway to prosperity. So again, this is not a pie-in-the-sky framework, because we understand particularly in your position, what gets measured is what gets done. And so we have to be able to demonstrate what exactly is going to be the return on these investments. And so this is just an example of demonstrating how we think about measurements that provide both a framework for accountability, but also an opportunity to begin to understand who can invest, not just at the county level, or the city, or the state level, but many of our philanthropic partners who could be at the table, state and federal dollar drawdowns that we can use. And so this slide really helps us to understand through two important lenses, what an investment in neighborhood hubs, and these are just some examples of measurements. Obviously, when we get together, we could definitely come up with others. But, but understanding that if the goal of the neighborhood hubs is to increase the percentage of households with banking services, well, what does that mean when a family actually has an opportunity to be banked? That means that for them, they also have an opportunity to decrease household stress. They have, and what is, we know from the theory of change with regard to early childhood development, that when you reduce household stress, you reduce the instances of ACES, that when individuals have increased access to credit, that their neighborhood is going to tend to grow. It will be looked at as a financially feasible area for investment. And so that also decreases or increases social cohesion in that community. And what does that do? That reduces crime. That increases civic participation. All the things that, you know, we are speaking to today with regard to, how do we get our communities more engaged? How do we reduce violence? Well, when you think about many of these investments, these are crime reduction investments. These are housing investments. So I want to switch over to the data dashboard, which is the tool. So we have three facets of this. And the reason why I have our partners from Joining Forces for Children is because they have been working very hard. Dr. Forbes has been working very hard on a policy brief that is the tactical piece of this. So if you think about the dashboard that we're about to implement, that, or we're about to demonstrate, that is a measurement tool. So that's the moving the needle and moving towards success? The second part of that is this closing the wealth gap. It is an implementation framework. It is not to say that these are the only policies, but it's to give us a framework of understanding what are the basic principles of what we're trying to achieve here. And then Dr. Forbes' brief is really—the provides the comprehensive strategy and tactics. So each one of these layers are very much integrated and very purposeful. We've been very intentional in our thinking over the last decade with regard to what will it take to prevent adverse childhood experiences, create more positive community environments, and ultimately close these pernicious gaps that we've seen. The Opportunity Dashboard is a way for stakeholders such as yourself to begin to understand using data-driven, innovative solutions that maximize both the economic and social return. It provides an opportunity to think about strategic allocation of funding, forecasting and planning, as well as reporting and analysis, and to facilitate a shared vision of coalition. And so I'm going to bring my colleague, Daniel Chen, up. We're going to switch over to a live demo of the tool, so that you can begin to see how this works in real time. Take just a second here. So this is the opening dashboard here itself, and let's say the county wants to help to invest, to move, to maximize an investment in—which one are we? Early childhood education. And how—let's see. Tell me, how much are we going to invest? One million? Okay, so we'll invest $1 million in Cincinnati to maximize returns on early childhood education. What could we—how could we do that? Well, the tool says that we should, out of that $1 million, we should use $800,000 to invest in after-school programs, but then another $200,000 in training and education and childhood educators in Cincinnati. Great. So what would we expect to see as a return? Well, 14% increase in kindergarten readiness, as well as a 9% increase in the labor force participation. At the end of the day, how does that affect our GDP? Well, over time, you can see here the projection of how this contributes to the city and the county's GDP over 10 years. Now, these are just some selected indicators. Working with local partners here, we could find—we could tailor this to the indicators that are most of interest. But what we're trying to demonstrate here is there's an opportunity for Cincinnati and for the county to come together, to really think about, how do we use and maximize the use of public and private investments to strategically and intentionally address many of the root causes? So we would like to partner with both the city and the county, and many of the private agencies here, to gather specific feedback with regard to what are potential indicators and indices, to develop support for the use of a dashboard here in the city, as well as participate later this spring in a meeting with local, private, and public partners to talk about, what is the problem that we're trying to solve? Where's the opportunity to make these place-based investments? And collectively, what can we do to create a more resilient and just environment for our children and families here in Cincinnati? So thank you so much for your time. I don't know if we have questions or clarifications that you need.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you all for being here, partners that are in the room. Can I ask just a practical question? So as you think through this collaboration between the city and the county, and get to tactical ways to create impact, so I see that on the dashboard, you already have some things that are working in that space. How does—tactically, how does that work? What does the collaboration look like? What would you anticipate some of those investments being?
Yeah, absolutely. So some of the investments, we already have outlined in the Wealth Gap Report, but there's also a number of—a range of investments that Dr. Forbes has in her report that's coming out at the end of this month, that looks across the lifespan. So we understand that it's not just going to be a single investment in early childhood education, as we demonstrated there, but it also is thinking about, well, what do we need to do with regard to labor? How do we increase labor force participation? Reduction in disconnected youth, reductions in community violence, reduction in, you know, many of the numbers of individuals who are unhoused. So it's really thinking about it from that systems perspective, and getting down to the neighborhood level, that then gets us down to individual outcomes. So it's not just programs that are looking at fixing people, as much as what is happening at the systems level, that continually, reliably, and predictably over time, and in the same place, produces these outcomes that we've seen for as long—I mean, I was born—okay, now I'm telling my age, but I grew up here. I was born in 1967, and driving through the city's neighborhoods, I'm still seeing the same place-based outcomes that I saw growing up in the '70s and '80s in the city. And so that really does demonstrate how we have to take a place-based approach to this, and tailoring those programs to a place-based need.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. In your experience, what would be the expectation related to the private sector coming in and participating also with the city and the county in this work?
Yes, we've already had conversations with several of the Fortune 500 companies that are here in the city. They are very much interested in how their programs and investments can be more strategically placed, that fit with some of the outcomes that would be of the collective nature. So whether those are food security issues, or whether that's homelessness, or addressing affordable or low-income housing, or investment in education resources, both the philanthropic entities here in the city, as well as the corporate partners in the city, are making millions of dollars of investments, but they're doing it in a silo. So what we would see is, can we come together and choose one or two neighborhoods, and actually collectively and strategically maximize our investments, come up with those indices that would help us understand what are we receiving as an economic and a social return? One of the things that I said, too, when we presented this to City Council last month, and I think this is—you'll appreciate this, what we see this as is something that is budget-neutral. We're not asking for additional dollars to support this effort. We're saying, can we do this in a strategic fashion, so that the money that we're actually already spending and already allocating, how does that join with money that says comes from another foundation or a corporate partner, but let's do it strategically together to actually close these critical gaps in place?
Thank you. Commissioner Somer-Dumas?
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. This is just awesome. As you were saying, a quote you said, "a crime-reduction investment." And it absolutely is, when we think about feeding those who need the substance and housing people and jobs, and that's why we created the Office of Youth and all of that. It's so much bigger than just feeding a person. If you have these people walking around in Hamilton County, and they're hungry, they're angry, they want to do things on their own, but they can't because of maybe a felony or something, and can't get a job, it's just really important that we look at it as it relates to the long-term effect of our society, and that sounds like what you're doing. I was looking at the prosperity—pathway to prosperity, and I'm sure that's not by accident. The Maslow's hierarchy of needs is just like this. And unless you do the first part, you can maybe get to the second part, which is educational, community resources, and then financial stability. But if you don't have that first part, it's very hard to be successful. And so I think if we can get people to look at the long-term needs of people, and how you have to—I think about these athletes who get all these millions of dollars, and they were never taught how to handle money, and what money means, and how to make money grow. That's a lot of the issues that we have. But this is just, I think, a great roadmap to get started, and partnership definitely is important, the city and the county. So I thank you so much for your work, and all your staff and their work. So thank you so much.
Vice President Dumas, you brought an excellent part about financial education. I'm very careful with my words, and so you'll read through the report. We never talk about financial literacy. I think particularly in this part of the country, where we have such high levels of people who have historically not been literate, not just financially, but otherwise, and that's more of a reflection on our school systems than on individuals, I want to be very careful in talking about access to financial education, because everyone has an opportunity to learn if they have access to the resources. And one of the recommendations that's in this report about building a future is, currently our policies in public schools have that children in their 11th or 12th grade are receiving some level of financial education. And my recommendation is, let's get those kids before they get their first paycheck. And why is that? Because if we have access to community banking, and they can go with their first paycheck and make a deposit, it's starting to build a lifelong pattern of, I have something to save for, I have something that I can do. And it also provides an opportunity for two-generation change. So if you have parents, and I'm sure that, you know, with the why in their presentation, many of the parents who are unhoused have also been historically unbanked. Imagine if their child on their first job has the opportunity to become banked. That changes the trajectory, not just for that child, but also for those families. So those are just small tweaks, but also an important, when you talk about Maslow's hierarchy, an important component that these neighborhood resource hubs could really serve. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation, and it's so great to have someone who, like yourself, from coming through the public school system at Walnut Hills—that was one of our rivals. I'm a Withrow grad, so—but we love each other, and to want to come back and use the skills to help move us forward. Couple of things that I wanted to just highlight, and wish we had such a dashboard when we had the $158 million, a one-time opportunity that probably will never come in any of our lifetimes, again, with the American Rescue Funds. And I think that our board, we did, I think, a very good job in thinking through the system right now, is that we have people who have a right-now problem, and we're—as a board, we have to stabilize. We've got Grandma trying to stay in the house that Grandma owns, because the property taxes have shot through the roof. We have industries like nursing that needs funding, and we put funding for nursing programs to get—because we need nurses right now. We have a—we had an opportunity to see what we're going to do with affordable housing, and we put 50 million of it, a largest of any government entity in history, toward it, and we tried to go through CDF to try to leverage those funds and stretch them out. We also said that we wanted certain housing to come out of that, and so some of those things are happening. Disability housing needed right now as well. So we put some right now, and then we put some things down the road. Obviously, with the nursing, that will continue, because there will be nurses down the road as well. We also put a lot of money into youth, because as you mentioned, there, we're talking about youth violence. We had a—our summer employment went up to 1,300 people in one day. We have a mobile unit now that takes our services out to the communities throughout Hamilton County. Many people didn't know what we had available, how do you access it? And now we've helped over 30,000 people. We are in a unique position, as I think, as a county, in what we have been able to do, maybe different than one municipality has been able to do. In fact, many places in the country could not do anything with their money, they sent it back. So with all of that said, we are now in the measurement side of those things. But let me also say that there are a lot of programs that I've been hearing about. The community council president, Sandra Jones Mitchell, who is in Avondale, but everybody I see has a program coming in from out of town, they got research going on, they got a grant, and the community, they say they give you, you know, $20 on a ham sandwich to give your story about Avondale. And everybody's getting all this money in a place that's got poverty, but the people in poverty don't have the money. All the researchers, all the—no offense to the academias. And she says she don't even know what's going on. And so it seems to be, we have become a place of lots of research, lots of studies, and a lot of people getting paid, except the people that live there. So one of the things, I guess my question is on this, is this program—I noticed you— and you gave some stats that I don't want people to miss. You gave some stats, childhood poverty and community assets. The national average is 16.3%, Hamilton County's at 22%, Cincinnati's up at 35.8%. And while I represent the whole county, I've lived in Cincinnati my whole life, except when I went to college at Grambling State. Then you got East Price Hill, 23%, Elmwood Place, 19%, Riverside, 17%. Then you go to Avondale, 33%, and Woodline is in here, 24%. Clifton, obviously, 7%. So my question is, is this program and dashboard focused just on childhood component? Or—I guess that's what I would ask.
Yeah, so I do want to speak to the community input piece of that, because it was definitely more than $20 on a ham sandwich. I just want to—I just want to be—
I'm not saying you, but it's another program.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, yeah. But I just—it is our core ethic to really work side by side with community. I'm very—I don't consider myself an academic, although I am a professor. I call myself a pracademic. That means that I'm working side by side in community. And I use the evidence that—from scholarly work, but translate into something that is meaningful for community. So all of this work has really come from the community voices, and not, you know, to further my career in any way. So I just really want—and, you know, I don't have to do this in Cincinnati, but it's really important that I do do it in Cincinnati, because Cincinnati made me. With regard to the measurements, if you look through the report, you'll see that there are measurements that go across the lifespan. So it's not just about children, it's also about the parents, it's about the community environment. And just to give you an example of how we think about that, when we were talking to one of the city council member, Albie, this summer, this past summer, and she was looking at creating a food delivery program with Kroger, and she was talking to my colleague, Dr. Chen and myself, about how do we measure this? How would we measure success? And I said, "Think about the ripple effects." So if a family has enough food to satisfy their needs that are healthy and nutritious, yes, there are measurements that could happen across the time span for that family, as far as biological markers are concerned, perhaps behavioral concerns. But we're going into summer, and what if the city invested in public grills? So now that not only do people have enough food to eat for their family, they may have food to share, and create a community of, "Let's do potlucks, let's do grillouts." I know that we had that in my neighborhood when I was growing up in Kennedy Heights. And what does that do? That creates community cohesion, social cohesion. What's the ripple effect of that? That food delivery program becomes a crime-prevention program. That food delivery program becomes a community mentorship program, because people begin to know each other across the lifespan. When people are united that way, that also lifts up community voice and community power. So when we think about how we measure success, it's not just looking at the individual, but it's also reaching up to the neighborhood level, and thinking about, what does it really mean to have healthy neighborhoods across the county here, not just in Cincinnati, but across the county? Because the disparate outcomes that we see are not just in Cincinnati, they're in St. Bernard, they're in Chevyat, they're across the entire county. We have pockets of historical and growing poverty. And so part of that is building an environment for success, something that we have not done in the intentional fashion across multiple sectors, public and private. And so that's really what this is about, is how do we come together and listen to those community members about what it is that they need, and what's important to them, not to the academics, and not necessarily to the politicians.
No, I get you. I just came out of election, so I talked to the citizens. The reason I brought that up, because that's the complaints that I've been hearing, and it's not necessarily—it's a lot of programs, it's not just yours. There's other study programs happening, and they've been upset about that, giving away their stories. And one of the people is in here, so that's why I know it's real. So my point is redistribution of funds, if that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about expanding funds, is what you indicated. And my position has been, from what I'm hearing from people, when you talk about the private sector, not you talking about, but just in general— when you talk about the private sector, not you talking about, but just in general, I want to have a report on the private sector. Yes, they do give money out from their nonprofits and those kind of things. But I'll talk about jobs. Some of these people would need help if, what are they, what is the, what is the, what is the inequities in terms of pay? We've got a pay inequity that we've had for many, many years. I've been the vice president, vice mayor of Cincinnati and fought that many years ago. We have a lot of big time companies, but we're not necessarily seeing that in terms of pay. So there's a, we got to deal with a lot of different things. I'm not necessarily supportive of just redistribution of funds. I'm looking for expansion of funds, because I think we have, and we're going to have, because the Washington, what had, the leadership in Washington has changed. There's a lot of people just like federal workers. I mean, they're, some of them may be down here, federal workers, out of work. This ain't people who are just in poverty. These are people that was working, had jobs, had a house. Those kind of things, I think, building on what you have now. But I don't want to give the, go to the, when you go to the business community, they like to have one thing. Tell me the one thing that can help, particularly African-American, give me one thing. Well, we like Popeyes and Kentucky Fried Chicken. We want to be able to have, we have a Bengals stadium, a stadium for the NFL, and a stadium for Major League Baseball. We didn't say get one thing. We've got the FC, they built something for soccer. We're, they're trying to build an arena, and we already got an arena. So, but when it comes to the community, the everyday citizen, we try to put them in just, we only got one box. So the only thing I'm saying is, I'm looking to, to see if we can expand, because I don't want, there are, there's a lot of good work that is happening. They don't have enough money, you know, to do the work that they already have. And then we've got a whole floodgate of new people who will be losing their jobs, who, you know, whole middle class that'll be wiped out. And I just want to make sure that as we're looking at this, because I had someone else come to me and say, hey, I want to do a dashboard, particularly on black organizations that are getting pennies from the, you know, what they should be getting. And they wanted them into one box, it wasn't your group, it was another group. They want them in one box, they want to do a dashboard to see, are they really doing it? But we in the baby pool, and they in the deep end. And you put every group that's poor, every group that's minority, you keep putting them in this. Now, all we doing is in the baby pool splashing, and we hope to get a splash of us. And then this small group of people, they're in the deep end, and they're swimming, and they're having all kind of prosperity. So I'm trying to bring the pools together and have one pool, so everybody has an equal shot. And that's, that's what we did here. We were only spending $1,400, one, one quarter with minority businesses. But we collect a sales tax from everybody, if you buy some bubble gum. We now have changed that. We now have a program, hopefully, $70 million, which makes a lot more sense. So that's all I'm saying. I'm looking at, I think the dashboard, to me, is very valuable to see is what, what do we invest in? Did it really make an impact? But I want to make sure on the other side, private side, because I'm starting to see the private side put it back on the government, whereas back in the day, they used to write the big checks. And so I want to make sure that they don't think that this is the only thing we got going on. Because as a county, you know, we got 49 municipalities, we got a lot of, I'm looking for Popeyes and Kentucky Fried next to each other, Burger King and McDonald's both can survive. So I want to do, I don't necessarily want to do one thing, I want to have diversification. So I like the dashboard, I think that's going in the right direction, and hope we can have some flexibility so that we can push for expansion of funds, is all that I'm saying.
Yeah, with regard to the dashboard, I just want to say quickly that that is not meant to be, what, what you saw was just an example in one area. It does allow for customization as a development partner, for you to figure out the indices. But what's, there's a piece of this that I really want to touch on with regard to the public-private piece of this. We did not just talk to community partners, we've also, you know, spoken with a number of elected leaders over the last three years in the preparation of this report. But we've also talked to corporate leaders and financial leaders in Cincinnati, but also broadly nationally. One of the things that's really important, and I'll use this quote from a corporate leader here in Cincinnati, is that for them, they're not interested in the charity model. Quote, "We want to move people from the donation line to the checkout line." That means that they recognize that there's an importance in developing and investing in this workforce here, which is an important part, is the pillar, as you stated, the Maslow's hierarchy of need. It's not just jumping to homeownership, but how are you giving people a pathway to economic mobility and stability? And so when we talk about that, that's part of how the dashboard thinks about where are we making the investments? So with, you saw with the outcome of kindergarten readiness. Kindergarten readiness doesn't happen on its own just because you've changed the curricula. You've built a workforce that actually is trained and has the ability to improve outcomes for those kids. That's part of our bottom line there as a county. That's part of a new customer for a grocer. That's a new customer for a rental unit. That's a new customer for cars. That's a new taxpayer, a new taxpaying base. So I, I want us to think about, you know, these important indices, not just at the childhood level, but what are those ripple effects that we know are going to actually help us to understand? How are we moving towards prosperity in this county? And that's really how the dashboard is, and the work that we approach, how we approach the work itself.
Great, well, I'm looking forward to getting more information and, like you, like you indicated, wanting to respond to the citizens of, of our county. And looking forward to that. And like you said, hearing from them, and I heard a lot from them, and received 218,000 people, so we have responsibility. But I think there are some good things in here, and look forward to hearing more about it. So thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Summer Dumas, do you have another question?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I know this was a lot of hard work that you guys, ladies, had to do, and certainly appreciate it. Anything that can make our county better, certainly, I'm open to it. And I'm, I'm sure you have a lot of information, background of all the work that you've done, so I certainly appreciate you coming in. I just had a quick question for Dr., yeah, that, that was an AI program you used?
There is AI integrated.
Okay, what, what's the name of, which AI program did you use?
Oh, right now it's running on ChatGPT, but we are assessing what is the next.
Awesome, I'm taking an introductory.
I was wondering where you were going with that. I don't even know what we're talking about anymore. Let, let me just also say that I, I know that you spoke with city council members. We have good relationships with the city and want to be in partnership as we try to strategically think through the challenges that are, as you say, not only in the city, cities in the county, but we've got 48 other jurisdictions in the county, some of whom are struggling in similar ways to some of the neighborhoods in the city. And so this conversation, I think appropriately, is with the city and the county, so that we can be at the table, part of the conversation, and hopefully, a part of the strategic view as to what, what works. As you say, what we can measure and how we move the needle for people in this community. Because in the end, that's what it's about. And, and, and to me, the neighborhoods, you know, are, are very different, the two neighborhoods that you've chosen. I think that's very interesting, but have very similar issues. And, and there are other communities throughout the county that hopefully, if, if we can figure out strategies that are meaningful, that can be extrapolated to other places throughout the county with, as you say, investments that are already being made. They're just maybe not being made strategically or collectively, so that it really moves that needle. So I'm looking forward to even the broader conversation as we move forward. So Jeff, did you have something as well?
Yeah, so thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, just following up on that very question, just on the, on the tool and the model itself, which I think is really, really interesting, especially just in, we wrestle all the time with the return on investment of, of public investments, right? We know how difficult that can be at times. So this is really, really, really interesting from that perspective. So I think the example that you used was early childhood education, right? So I guess my, my question is, how, how robust are the, are the variables that you have right now? I'm just thinking about, from the county's perspective, you know, we invest across the entirety of our budget, you know, everything from affordable, you know, you had a dollar in early childhood education in the example, I think. So my mind immediately was, you know, a dollar in affordable housing development, a dollar in domestic violence prevention, a dollar in universal basic income provision. How do those ripple in the same way? And then, even as the board starts thinking about, you know, the allocation of scarce resources, you could even take it to some of the more traditional economic development. We're talking about social, community investment right now. But as we think about how to allocate scarce resources, more of your traditional economic development programming, how does that ripple into this space? So I'm sorry, long-winded way of asking the question. How robust is that set of variables that you're able to plug in right now? And how long would it take to build out an additional set if they don't already exist?
Yes, I, I don't want to overstep, but I believe we have about 500 variables currently. So Dr. Chan and I work very closely on this, but I want to make sure that he speaks precisely.
Yes, actually, so for calculation, there's, yes, around 300 to 500 total in terms of different arrays. But the actual input and output that probably directly matters and therefore more relevant to your question is just about 100 typically. Now, this is exactly why we are, you know, trying to have developmental partnership with the communities here at Cincinnati to get to the level where it is actually useful and helpful. So, you know, is it like every, you know, which policy potential levers should we be building into it? What kind of outcomes are actually helpful for making decisions? And the combination of that, presentation of that? So those are all the questions that we're asking. And relatively easy to build new variables in if we know what is the understood pathway from this variable to influence the rest of the system, or the system influencing it, whether that's qualitative or quantitatively understood.
And I just want to add, because I, I would be remiss not to acknowledge the prosecutor's office that's here. Our work spans across looking at three separate sectors, housing, public education, criminal justice, and law enforcement. Because, you know, the science demonstrates that these are the systems that are most proximal to influencing community environments. So we have worked with, just up the river there, in Louisville, they looked at reentry issues for individuals that were coming back into community, particularly stabilization of housing and access to services. And what we found in that was the issue with regard to the rental policies in the city and, and, you know, predatory landlords. And so there is a lot of flexibility with regard to understanding what's the issue that's at hand. How do we measure that? And again, being very localized in understanding what is the retrospective data, and then creating these predictive models, so prospective models, to understand if we invest strategically in these places, how do we produce X number of outcomes over time?
Thank you.
Yeah, and let me just put a finer point on that. The city and the county invest in very different kinds of things. We do a lot collectively, but we have very different areas. You know, we're running the courts, we're running the Justice Center. I mean, so when you talk about reentry, that's really a county function as opposed to a city function, not to bifurcate so much, but just help folks understand that what we do is similar and different than what the city does, and our investments reflect that. And so as you look at JFS and some of the other investments there, we've got a children's services levy. We've got seven levies under our jurisdiction. So there's a lot of investing going on here. And I think it might be important, by way of building out, what Jeff referred to, that, understanding those systems and where those investments are, so that we can build with the city on, you know, what we are doing together.
Yeah, and that, that's the intention behind this dashboard, is to not just look at the county's investments over here and the city's investments here, but it's really creating this dashboard so we see how the county investments are interacting with the city investments, as well as philanthropic and other private investments. So you're able to see holistically, how does that, these, this collective pot move us towards success?
Great, thanks. So whatever we can do to help build that out, please let us know. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you to all, this is, there's a very impressive group of individuals over here. So I just do want to recognize you one more time. Thank you for being here. Thanks for the presentation. Okay. Well, we are going to move on to then our second presentation, and they do fold together. So this one is about family homelessness prevention. So we've got a number of individuals, Peg Durkers from Bethany House, Stacy Birch from Found House, Nicole Williams from the YWCA, and is Kevin, I don't see Kevin, but.
Kevin is not, was not able to be here today, and you've just introduced us, but let, let me just.
Please do, and, and then the others in the room.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, Nicole is not with us. Instead, we have Joanna Glover from the YWCA, and you've already introduced Peg and myself from Found House. We want to try to prevent family homelessness, and we're going to talk about that. But we are also the county safety net for people whose option is really the street, or a couch, or an abandoned building. So we want to think about what we're talking about today in those two ways in which we wrap around families. And so Peg will start us off here.
Are either of you representing Kevin?
We have Kevin's data, and it is part of the presentation, and he's a part of our partnership. So in that sense, yeah.
Okay. I just wish he would be here.
Yes, unfortunately, he had to be out of town today at the last minute.
He doesn't like coming here anyway.
Let's have a conclusion.
He's out of town, we're going to take it as. But I think.
Just joking, sort of, okay.
And we'd be happy to carry questions and concerns back.
We always have them, yeah.
So you do have before you, and thank you for this time. Thank you for this time. You do have before you the group that is referred to as the Family Housing Partnership of Hamilton County. We have worked together closely, collaborated and coordinated services for families experiencing housing instability since 2007. And we're very proud that we have remained open to respond to community need as it's developed. So when Mercy St. John decided to get out of the house, housing business back in 2015, this group stepped up to make sure that that capacity stayed in the community and responsive to the needs of families who are homeless. When the pandemic hit, we kept operating. We did not go home. We, we used hotel surplus in the area to make sure that, again, families who were hard hit by the pandemic had a place to sleep overnight, a place to stay, food to eat, and people to work with to get back on their feet. And so we come to you, we want to tell you a little bit about, give you a brief overview of kind of the state of things for families and housing in Hamilton County today. Like, I forgot about my little. There we go. Like many nonprofits, we don't do this work alone. We work very hard not to duplicate services, so we work with a tight group of partners that you see listed there. Another partner, not private nonprofit, but governmental, that is central to the success of our families getting back into stable housing is JFS. We work very closely with them primarily on benefits, especially on health benefits. Often, our families have come to us, just one health, bad health condition or experience that prevented them from being able to continue to pay their rent, or they may have lost their job. And again, JFS has been an incredible partner to us, both in terms of benefits and when in times, rare times, we have to work with them around child dependency and neglect issues. And finally, I just want to remind us that family homelessness is hidden. It is not seen. Our families, more than half of them are working, and, but at night, they do not have a place to go home to. We know that they find very safe places, because above all else, they're going to protect their children. It might be a health system waiting room. a health system bathroom, in their car on a neighborhood street. Once in a while, a very odd place. They may be found a place to camp behind a school or someplace, again, that's safe for children. In terms of the numbers, and these are Kevin's slides, and he would be more eloquent in explaining them to you, but I'll try to do my best. The central access point is our hotline for people who are experiencing housing instability and need help. It's the countywide hotline that they can call. It's known in the community as 381 SAFE. So last year, the calendar year, more than 2,000 families called the CAP line, expressing a need for help with their housing. After a short screening, there were a smaller number, the 697 were eligible for shelter. They met the criteria for shelter. They were, in fact, homeless, either on the street or about to lose the couch typically that they're sleeping on at a friend or family members. Of those 697, only 266 families were able to be placed. It's due to capacity that has kind of gotten clogged with the housing conditions in the community. So we can serve more families when affordable housing is available in the community. If affordable housing for a family of four, five, and six is not available in the community, then we continue to work with that family until we can find them a safe and long-term affordable place to live. The thing to remember about these numbers is that there are typically, on average, about three children that come along with them. So two-thirds of everyone we serve are children, people under 18. And so any intervention, any assistance, is going to have three to four times the impact of these numbers. In addition, and the county was very generous in funding out of the ARPA money, shelter diversion. So we were able to help another, just over 100 families with those funds to actually prevent them from having to come into shelter. And of course, that reduces the amount of trauma that a family experiences because their world is not quite as disrupted. But in total, only 13% of the families who reached out for help around their housing were able to be helped last year. And 83% or more families calling for help at best received a referral. So the need is great. What we decided to do in addition, because we began to pick up a disturbing trend, we started a family street outreach. The street outreach that had been done previously in Hamilton County primarily focused on places where homeless individuals tended to shelter themselves outside. We began to see more and more families that were actually on the street and having to live on the street because there wasn't a place for them to go. As you can see, for many years, the number of families on the street was very small. And we were able to accommodate them and include them into the shelter capacity. But after the dramatic increases in rent that we've seen in the county since 2021, more and more families are staying on the street because we just don't have the capacity to serve them. Now, we didn't have a street outreach program that was going and looking for people either. But last year, we found more than 230 families living on the street.
Hello, everyone. So we, as the housing, the Family Housing Partnership, we provide a life-changing holistic services to families in need. Let's go back. Our goal is to work side by side with our program participants and support in finding employment and also stable housing. We work closely to ensure our children get back into school or to say in their current school. We assist parents with enrolling children in childcare. And in many situations, we offer short-term financial solutions such as purchasing uniforms for them to get back into work, car repair, transportation, and also so much more. Within our Family Housing Partnership, we offered assistance to 400 and 49 individuals, which include more than 1,000 children. We also had over 79,000 bed nights between the three shelters. We were able to divert with additional funding over 350 families from becoming homelessness by having our additional shelter diversion programs. But unfortunately, as each of us know, that that is not enough for our city or for our county. Children are impacted at a higher rate, and they brunt, they bear the brunt of homelessness. Due to significant correlation of homelessness and trauma, children get sick twice as often. They also change schools eight to nine times throughout their childhood. Sometimes that could be within a year for some of our families. They also, our goal as the Family Housing Partnership is that we want to break the cycle of generational homelessness. We've seen, over the last few years, we've seen many different families. Sometimes it's the grandparent, the mother, and the children that are coming into our shelter. So we're really working to work with the kids and the families to make sure that we can end that cycle. In order to break the cycle, we work with both parents and the children. We provide parent education to the parents to assist them to work through their stress and to try different coping skills when they're working with their kids through these traumatic situations. Because each of us know that research has shown that maladaptive or negative parenting responses can be prevented when the parent has a more positive outlook and way of looking at obstacles. We also provide prevention, emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, and that includes in trauma groups for the parents and for the children. We also offer after-school tutoring. We work very closely with Project Connect. We have field trips, academic support, physical activities, even teaching some of our parents yoga just to reduce some of that stress, and so much more within our shelters. In 2024, we raised over $250,000 for one-time assistance. Yeah, there we go. We raised over $250,000 for one-time assistance, and we continue to deliver amazing outcomes despite the many challenges that we face as an emergency shelter. Each shelter also does additional fundraising for after-care services, housing assistance, and much more so that we can provide the essential services that our family needs. Some of our outcomes that we are very, very proud of is that 85% of individuals that come or families that come into our shelter, they move into housing. 50% maintain or increase their income. Of course, we want to continue to have that grow. 85% to 90% stay housed. And we look at two years out for this actual percentage. But we're very happy that 85% to 90% of all of our families continue to stay housed. Thank you.
So my colleagues have talked to you about our work and about our good outcomes. But, you know, and I get asked by all the time, you've done this work for so many years. Why hasn't homelessness stopped? Why, you know, what, why does this continue? And it's a reasonable question, right? And it's a question that we try to answer just within the population of folks that we do serve that find that they have these problems more than one time. One, one answer is that we never have, you saw that with capacity, sufficient resources to meet the need that's presented to us. We never get to a place where we're able to meet those needs in terms of our work. And there are some families in the population that we're serving that have deeper and more difficult barriers to staying housed. Some things that we've been seeing are loss of capacity for daycare, especially daycare that meets maybe odd hour shift work that got lost around COVID and has not been recovered. So daycare options can be very challenging and limited for families. We have a high prevalence among the families that we serve of chronic health, physical disabilities, mental health issues, developmental disabilities, at about 40%. And that directly impacts a household's ability to take advantage of some of the resources they do have access to when they have these other challenges with which they're coping. And as a result, about half of the families that we are currently serving really require longer-term assistance to stabilize, more than just, you know, for families where we're able to bring that one-time assistance that was mentioned to bear, and that's what they need, we do that, absolutely. And we love it when we can do it that simply. But about half of the families need far more support and time than that to stabilize. There's other barriers that, you know, we've been working on prevention. That's a part of what we talked about at the beginning of this. We're working on a project with the city to use data analytics to identify people sooner in that sort of trajectory towards housing loss, to try to intervene there. We've been doing diversion in partnership with you guys and others for a number of years. We also try to do prevention work through our after-care programming because unfortunately, the biggest predictor of homelessness is having been homeless before. And so we do a lot of work around housing retention once people are in housing to make sure that they don't get back on that path. But some other barriers include, you know, families are often, you know, having these challenges, surrounded by other families who are having these challenges. And they do everything they can to figure it out on their own for as long as they can. That's what we all do, right? We're all very reluctant sometimes culturally to ask for help. We rely on our support systems, so we may not access resources that could help us further up the line because we're trying to resolve the problem ourselves. We try to be very clear with our partner agencies and the community at large about what we have and what we offer and that people can get connected to us. But sometimes people don't know about us still. That's a challenge. And of course, there's also the issue that when they do know about us, we can't always help them because we don't have sufficient capacity. And that creates distrust. That creates loss of, you know, you know, these people want to help, but they don't have room for me. So what do I do, right? And finally, I just want to point out, and we don't have a slide for this, a big barrier, and it speaks to some of the income stuff that our previous presenters talked about. Half of the people that we're serving in shelter are working. This isn't that they don't have a job and they're not paying their bills. It's that the math does not work for them to be able to sustain housing. Commissioner Reese, you mentioned investments in nursing. Something that's common among the moms, and we see a lot of single moms, is getting training to become state-tested nursing assistants. It's a common profession among the families we're serving. And it's a great one because it is a path out of the very lowest-paying sort of fast food and other kinds of jobs. And a lot of the moms hope that then they will be able to get additional training and have additional options in the healthcare field once they enter it. So it's an ideal way for parents to move the needle just a little. Having said that, the average monthly gross wage in Cincinnati of an STNA is about $2,500. The average price of a two-bedroom apartment is $1,682 as of a couple of weeks ago. That's over already, well over 50% of their pre-tax income just towards paying the rent. And so we have people that are working very hard, and then they can make that work for a while, right? They can make that budget work for a little while. But if there's one emergency, one car repair, one sudden loss of the hours that they were scheduled for, there is no room in those budgets for error. There's no room for savings. All that's left has to go towards healthcare and food and childcare and all of those other things. And so that comes back to the issue of prevention because it's success when we get a family like that housed, even though they're still going to be in a situation where they're not going to get out of that budget cycle. And that's all I have for you today.
Yeah, that's right.
If it would detach, I'd do it.
So thank you, thank you all for the presentation. Really appreciate it. So we have talked about homelessness a lot here at the county commission because we are always trying to provide resources for prevention and for immediate needs, as you have all indicated. But your numbers, and I want to dig into this just a little bit, this graph that shows a significant spike or increase in the numbers of families that are being identified in need. I understand that the outreach workers weren't looking for families necessarily, and so perhaps they didn't find them. But it seems to me that there's something else going on here related to family homelessness in this community. I think, tell me, it goes without saying that most of these families, the head of household is a female.
Correct.
Okay. So my question is, and you alluded to it, there are more families that are in need right now, it seems, at least that have been identified. And somebody, one of you said that the needs are more acute than what we have seen in the past. And this is something that we hear a lot about as county commissioners. We're hearing this about children that enter our system over at JFS and that there are more children entering, and the needs are more acute. And therefore, we need to allocate more resources for that. Is that what you're saying here? That it's a matter of the numbers, the sheer numbers of families being identified? But it's also the complexity of the needs of those families? And therefore, the lack of room, but also the lack of resources available? Is that what you're talking about?
I think the answer is yes. We definitely are seeing more in terms of needs. And as Jawanna shared, once a family is homeless for a while, the impact of that trauma, those ACEs impacts, ACEs impacts are dramatic, and they're multi-dimensional for the children. I was going to pull that slide up. Did you want to talk about it?
Well, no, I just wanted to also add that we're also seeing our children that need to go into therapy. And sometimes it's taking them three to six months to even get an appointment to see a therapist. And so we're trying to deal with the trauma at hand while they're in the shelter. But sometimes they're already gone from the shelter by the time they're able to get into therapy. And if the mom doesn't have the resources during the day to take off, to take the child to the therapy, then we're seeing some issues there.
Right, our average length of stay for somebody in a shelter is about 66, 70 days. And it varies, depending on the family. That's an average, obviously. But I think the median is 50 days. So they're with us a short time. And in that short time, though, we're able to get them connected to community resources where they do exist. Children's behavioral health services is one that is sorely missing.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just round out their responses? I mean, it's both "and," and I think they've said that. We said in an earlier slide, it's about half of our families who have more complex barriers related to not just the trauma they've experienced during housing loss, but also related to those chronic health conditions, mental health issues, other things that have occurred. So it's both "and." We see people who, and I always talk about this with supporters, it's like two populations within one. One, where we're talking about more economic factors, and one where we're talking about economic factors plus all of the other barriers that we've mentioned here today.
And they are with us a short period of time. But you can see that in that short period of time, we're able to set them up for long-term success. 85% of these families stay housed and go on to increase their income and so on. So again, we're trying to put them in touch with other community resources as well as give them life skills while they're with us that they might need just for that next boost up in terms of their family independence and self-sufficiency.
Thank you. I do want to recognize that Raquel Howard-Smith, the president and CEO of the YW, is in the audience. Thank you, Raquel, for being here. So I just have one last question. And, you know, it does occur to me that with the, once again, in Hamilton County, we've got partnerships. we've got partnerships with your organizations that not every community has. And so we are very lucky and blessed to have you all working in this community in partnership with us. And as was referred to earlier, related to ARPA, we have done a lot of investing in this space, primarily in prevention, but also the hotel stays after COVID and, and all the rest. So we, we have been in partnership, but we're lucky to have you all serving on the ground. So thank you for what you do. The other thing, and I don't know if it was specifically mentioned, but we talk a lot about barriers for women, in particular with kids, and childcare is almost always brought up as one of these barriers. And we have, again, invested with some of our ARPA dollars to build that pipeline so that some of those childcare agencies that closed during COVID have the ability to reopen at the capacity that they had before, which is not always, again, we're not there yet. But do you see that as you look at barriers, is that a, even in the nursing profession, those hours are challenging? So to get childcare, I think, you know, I just can't imagine how challenging that is. And if that's the barrier, how is that one solved?
That is one of the barriers. Of course, you have to be able to get to your daycare and then to work, and maybe your other children to school. So, and, or from school, depending on when you work, if you work second or third shift. So it is very complex. These families are very resilient and very skilled and understandably often overwhelmed to try to make all these different systems that don't necessarily coordinate or aren't efficient work for their family. And we have appreciated the support of the county. Of course, the ARPA dollars are about gone. We, homelessness is addressed in the Indigent Care Levy. That does not go to family homelessness agencies. It serves the singles, which is important, and I'm sure they need more too. There has been a little bit of prevention dollars, but a little bit of those gone out from the children's levy. But I think you can see that we do a lot of work, prevention work, that helps families not become even further dependent on the county for services.
Well, and looking at the chart, that may have made sense a few years ago, but it may not make sense anymore with all these families entering the, the system. Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Thank you. Thank you all for your presentation. And the entire time you were talking, my stomach was going. This is near and dear to my heart, just, I mean, see these bags, hardly able to go to sleep at night, being blessed to have a warm, soft bed. And I think about it quite often. And so the work that you guys are doing is just awesome. And I was looking at eighty-five percent permanently housed, fifty percent maintaining increased income, eighty-five to ninety percent stay housed. You should be so proud of that. I'm so proud of it. And I believe that you guys that are working with homelessness are really trying to do the best you can do. I wrote some notes all over here. But it needs to be urgency for not only the county, but also the cities surrounding areas. It affects our babies and moms wanting to be good moms. And so as you talk about the fam, homeless families going up from eleven and twenty-twenty-three to two-hundred-and-thirty-two, oh my goodness, to, to think about that. And then I talked about, there are lots of college students that are living in their cars that go to UC. I know, I don't know about Xavier, but I'm sure it's the same way. Just hopeless, but trying to get an education to move forward. And then I heard recently in Mount Healthy specifically, in the high school, that there are about, I don't want to quote the number, I may be wrong, about two-hundred-and-thirty-two young people that are living in their cars with their families. So the thought of that just really disturbs me. I asked our board to commit a million dollars for tiny homes, and they agreed, and I appreciate that. We're right now in the assessment process. I want us to move faster because there are more people out on the street. And I remember saying a few months ago, it is getting cold. Maybe it was more than a few months ago. But we need to move quicker. We need to help more. The city needs to help more. We need to find out where we can take money. I don't know, it may be from infrastructure. I don't know. But these are people we're talking about on our streets that are trying to make a life for themselves. And I was thinking about, you could probably help me. I was thinking about Maslow's hierarchy again, and it talks about the first level is food and housing and all that. And then you come up to belonging. How can they belong to someplace where they don't feel like they're being helped, even though you guys are helping them? But are we going to see a future? Are we going to be a normal family? And then at the next, one of the next levels is actualization, that they can be confident and they can help others and, and build their children up. So we're so far away from where we need to be, but I see us moving forward. And I see you guys, I just honor you. I'm just so proud of you. And Director Raquel, and the work that you're doing, I've heard about the work that you're doing. And so I just thank you all. And this is an urgent problem that we need to handle. And I truly believe that the board has done about as much as we can do, but other people need other entities, other agencies need to think outside of themselves and what's important for our people, all our people. So I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I want to say this out loud because I turned fifty and my memory is impaired now. Like, it literally happened on my fiftieth birthday. So I want to say this out loud to remember it. I would love to connect you with some people at Hyde Park Community United Methodist Church about family tiny homes, or family specifically, and, and connect you about those efforts.
Okay, great. We'll have our administrator check into that. Yeah, that's awesome. There are lots of, like you say, somebody talked about silos. People are looking at tiny homes all over the place. So if we can just put our energy together, we, we have the money and they, other people can give money, we can get it done. I know we can.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Reese?
First of all, thank you. Thank you, ladies, for the presentation and the work that you're doing on the ground, and also highlighting that this is a very complex issue, and the needs are growing. My concern is a lot of people, like you said, who work every day but cannot make those ends meet. And the ends are getting further and further apart, and more people are getting in that category. We don't have a lot of programs for people in that area. You'd have to be almost destitute. We've got programs for you. Of course, if you're super rich, you don't need a program. But everybody else that falls in there, they're like, where do we go? And that's why the ARPA was so important because it was the first time in history that people who had been paying taxes and never asked for any help actually could get some help. And that's why we have our 513 Relief Bus, our mobile operations, and many of you have partnered with that operations to take the programs. Because we had programs where people didn't know about it because they never had to access it, but all of a sudden now they're furloughed, don't have food now, can't pay their rent. So now they had to access it, but do it in a way where they can have their dignity as well, as, and then understand what is available. Because we had so many things you didn't know. We created a portal, fiveonethreerelief.org. I was thinking the first two weeks, we had almost two-hundred-thousand people access it. You now can even do your applications online. When we go out, we're no, we're not doing leaflet fairs, where we sending you back home or run to the library, go get copies. We're doing it right there on the spot. It's a unique model that we have, I think is a national model. And we are able to also put people that needed help, put them right with you to be able to get some of the help. And then we were able to invest these dollars, as was stated earlier, with the tiny homes. We had, because we put fifty million dollars and we said, put it to the side and help with, now we can have these innovative projects. And I concur that we've got to move quickly. We need to be able to move a little bit quicker because Washington's moving quicker. And I call it, I'm a former athlete, they're playing fast-break basketball, and we've been playing setup basketball. We ain't got time to set up, we got to run fast because the people are getting hit fast. So thank you for having the infrastructure. CEO Raquel Howard, I want to acknowledge you and the YWCA as well. And one of the things that we were able to do, you're putting together a, a new type of shelter home because we found that sometimes people, they're leaving their house and they have privacy, then they go into a shelter, maybe don't have as much privacy. And so we put four-hundred-thousand dollars in, and that's going to be moving. Can you tell us when that project will be up and going? I know we got a chance to tour it, but...
Absolutely. So first of all, thank you to the county commissioners because you guys were one of the first government entities to invest in this project. And of course, that drew down more public funds. So I'm happy to say that this total project, which is eight-and-a-half million dollars, it has received fifteen percent of our funding from public dollars through city, county, and state. So thank you for being one of the first to invest in this project. Construction is going as planned. I shouldn't say that out loud. Peg knows better than I do. But we are scheduled to have our keys on May fifteenth of twenty-twenty-five. We'll definitely invite the commissioners in our entire community to come and see. It is a twenty-one-unit shelter. It is apartment-style. We will have all of our wraparound services that YW offers on the bottom floor, and also have spaces for community partners like JFS. We've already talked to them about coming into our shelter and providing those services similarly to the Relief Bus method that, that you guys have developed. We are also working with the hospital systems. As you know, some of the families that come to us, come to us with physical and emotional injuries. And so working with them to create space so that folks can have private exams within our shelter as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To the Bethany House, we had a ribbon cutting, and I had a chance to go through their, what are the new services? I know you've got some additional services with the facility in Von Hill. We'll be your neighbors. We're coming to Von Hill.
I know, I can't wait. Right across the street.
Yeah.
And you have a great walking path over there too. So we'll all stay healthy. The, we also created out, what we called outside provider space in our shelter when we built it, and moved in in end of twenty-two. So Free Store Food Bank, For See For Children, Neighbor Hub Health, all come in on a regular basis and do services to support our families, not only the ones staying in shelter, but we also serve another three-hundred families a year in our housing and prevention programs. And they come in and they're welcome to participate too.
Got the tour, that's a, a great facility. My other question on here has, we got other partnerships. And I will say that, I know that Commissioner Dumis mentioned it, and we all, you know, kind of joked about, but I am concerned about strategies and homelessness because I'll be honest with myself, we will vote on something like twenty million dollars. Then I get on the elevator and I go downstairs and somebody's out there asking me for some money and said, you ain't done nothing for homeless people. So I'm going to keep that on the table. I'm going to keep the heat on because if we're getting these twenty millions and so forth, you know, it gets back to the ROI, it gets back to what was said earlier about the dashboard, you know, how many people are we really helping? Because if our strategy is to end it, I shouldn't be increasing. I need to be seeing some decrease because we're trying to go out of business. So he's not here, so I can't ask him those questions. He's out of town. But I do want to say, and I said this to the administrator, I don't want to vote on twenty million dollars and then get on my own elevator and go downstairs and everybody's outside asking me for some money and say, we didn't do anything for homeless people. Now, those people, they'll, they'll label them, he labeled them, is this, that, and the other. But everybody out there is not looking just to get some money. There were some people that were looking for some services. So my understanding is that we're moving to, some people going to be on the streets and they'll be out. But it's just like a private company. If they invest something, if Kroger's CEO invests twenty million dollars, he's not, you know, he, he just had a press conference upstairs, he's not trying to get on the elevator and go downstairs, and he's surrounded by people that say, you ain't did nothing. So I know that they are working on that, and hopefully we'll have a report. I think it just started, where people are going to be on the streets helping with full services.
Yeah, yeah. And if I could, you know, I'm not going to speak for Kevin.
Please don't.
That's like, that's like a can of worms, right? No, I'm not going to speak for Kevin. But, but what I will say, you know, Found House, you know, we're one of the subcontractors for those, you know, big packages of dollars that are coming, for instance, from the federal level. And the majority of those funds coming to the community in that way, for example, I know you guys have invested in lots of different ways. But those funds, for example, the majority of that is for rental subsidy. And we use it every penny, believe me, to the best of our ability. We developed, but it goes back to what I said about the math and about housing costs and about wages, right? So we help people get off the street, and then we utilize every dollar that comes to the community for those rental subsidies of varying lengths of time, but they still find themselves in those budgets where they're working. And it, it, it's going to be difficult for them to afford housing without a subsidy of some kind. And so in the same way that impacts to CMHA from the other side of HUD, has resulted in loss of vouchers, which has impacted us. Because for us, going on a longer-term income-based voucher is, is one of our success markers. And suddenly, we don't have the availability we had last year to do that with CMHA. The dollars we're using are for shorter-term subsidies to recover from the crisis of housing loss, but we can get fifty percent of it. We could do better. We could get more families to maintain and increase their income. The math still doesn't work. And so those dollars are keeping people housed, but they're not necessarily getting people to a place where they can afford housing on their own. And that, I think, goes back to our previous speakers and a larger community conversation about how we pay wages, how we, I mean, STNAs, I use that example.
I get all what you're saying. But what I'm saying is, and it's, you, you all didn't do it today, but I would just want to send a message. Don't come past the homeless person. Get on the elevator. Come up here, make a big speech. Give me a PowerPoint. Get the twenty million. Get back on the elevator and pass the homeless person. Everybody's hands and sleeves got to be rolled up.
Yeah, absolutely.
I understand the technical stuff, but don't come get twenty million. And then I'm thinking, we done done something. And then I get on the elevator and I'm surrounded by some people that say, we, you know, you ain't done anything. And, and, and you can't answer that question because he's not here.
Yeah, yeah.
But we'll get with him when he gets back in town. Next is, my question is Duke Energy, Community Action Agency, the PIP program that's been around. We don't have enough money. And I know we had some extra money, but our, our ARPA money is gone. And I know we gave some money to Council on Aging. They came in and said they were open, and then they were closed. My point is, I want to bring that point up. The PIP dollars are something that people who pay for gas and electric, there's a fee on there, and it goes back, and Community Action Agency could do only so much. I'm getting calls from so many people with Duke, Mr. Ludo, I want to bring this up, I want to bring this up to the board. Because somebody, they knocked on my door. I don't like people knocking on my door because I've had some unwarranted visitors at my door. But my understanding is there is a thought of, the bill has jumped up, and the bills ain't right. I don't know if it is, but I don't know, commissioners, I want to have something or either report or something here. We got to look into these bills with Duke Energy because I'm hearing from people that saying their bills have jumped up eight, nine-hundred dollars and they was only paying two-hundred dollars. I, I want this to be looked into. I think we need to have Duke and find out, because yes, you can send them to the Community Action Agency, but if the bill is not right, now, of course, we don't want our bills to go up, but if the bill is not right, we need to get to the bottom of it prosecutor's office. I want to be on record that we got to look into these bills because that draws down the money anyway. More people got to go over here to Community Action Agency, they don't have no extra money. But I'm hearing some things, I don't know if it's true or not, but I'm hearing it from a lot of people, and they knocking on doors, asking people, did your bill jump? And I'm told that it's not, of course, they went up, but it wasn't supposed to go how it is now. So I wanted to put that on the table because you all have that as one of the barriers as it relates to this. And I know you can't answer that question. Would have to get the Duke people, but there, I don't, if it's a rumor, they need to, we need to end the rumor. If it's the truth, we get to get... If it's the truth, we get to get to the bottom of it. They said the bills have jumped through the roof. And that could take people out because you got to have your gas and electric, especially in the winter time. So I wanted to put that on the table. Last thing, I will end by this. And I'm going to challenge all of you ladies because I asked the person to come down here. And, um, this was hard, this was really to my heart. And this is the kind of stuff that I be getting from the citizens. I got a text that hit said, "Good morning, ladies." I didn't even know who it was from. "The time has come where I'm going to need my sister, friends and family the most. Things are getting very uncomfortable and it's time for me to disappear before something bad happens. If anyone knows someone who's renting an apartment or a house, I must get out. In the meantime, please pray for me and my peace and my sanity. And if I stay here any longer, things might get bad." Now I know that's what y'all specialize in. I just happened to get it and I was on the elevator with my sister from Bethany House. And she said, "We gonna be here today." And I had the person come down today. So when y'all leave out, uh, my office has the person with us. Uh, but that's what you do. Help people in these, particularly women in these types of situations. So I wanted to bring that up to them so people know that this is real. Now this is a person that works and middle class and all that. Don't know where to turn. And that's the kind of, that's what we're living in the times of today. Thank you all for all your work.
And I'd be more than willing to sit with her and have a conversation about the services that we can provide her. Whether it's here, if she needs to go to a different shelter that's not in this county for safety, we can make sure we take care of that.
She's here today and on y'all way out, we will connect you with her. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I had one additional comment. Um, when you mentioned about strategies to end homelessness and that they have to use money for rental purposes, I was very much aware of that. My issue is it's not strategy to end homelessness. It's strategies plural. And when you look at a number, 11 families last year and then now up to 232 families, and I'm not addressing any of you, that's my issue with Kevin Finn. Because I should have by now received a report saying we have all these families that are homeless. This is our strategy. And I haven't seen that. And I don't see it for other, uh, certain, when we have specific problems like children in the cars. And I mentioned that, I think he might have been here when I mentioned about all the children in the cars in Mount Healthy. I want to see a strategy for each area. You guys are trying to, to meet it and do it. And I honor you for that. But when you have someone who's the Director of Strategies to End Homelessness, show me a strategy. Things have changed. And so we can't keep doing the same thing. And I heard you say about the outreach thing. Are you going to dispatch, uh, people on the street, the outreach in Mount Healthy and see who's in car? Not you guys.
No, it's strategies, well, we, strategies works again in partnership as we all do.
I know.
So we do, we do dispatch people to wherever they are staying.
So has anybody been to Mount Healthy?
I'm sure they have, but.
Children in the car. Let me finish, please.
Absolutely.
Um, please let me finish, um, because I'm very emotional about this. And, um, I just want to see different strategies, uh, for what's going on. And so, um, there's really no excuses. And when we're paying good money to him, I've seen the partnership list and I was so surprised. It's like four pages back and front of people that are working with Kevin. And that's all great, but I want to see this number go down. And not that he can do it, you can do it, but I just want to know that there's a strategy out there. It didn't work. Change the strategy, you know? Bet you could come up with something. I'm sorry, but anyway. Okay.
We, we will carry your, we hear your concerns. And we will carry them back.
Right. Think, we need to think outside of the box.
The idea is that we're now in, we now know where those 200 plus families are.
Yeah.
We are working to get them into safety and, and services.
And so how did you find out where those 200 plus families are? Through the street stuff or?
And we started asking different questions. So we changed the strategy in terms of how we were talking with people when they called in for help. Uh, we work very closely with Project Connect.
Okay.
And the other school systems because every, every school district has to have a homeless liaison. So they typically know which families are really struggling. They, you know, the teachers will know when the kids come into school every day in the same clothes, uh, sometimes or other ways, but then we connect.
That's awesome.
Every CPS school does. So a gap that we have found is we have more and more families, uh, at Found House in both shelter and housing programs who are in charters and they don't have the same services or obligations around, um, tracking and supporting students struggling with housing loss. So I, I'll just mention that as a gap in the way those systems work and don't work together. Um, and I.
And when you said CPS, you mean all the public schools?
Correct, correct, correct. And, um, you know, I also have a hard time sleeping at night. Truth, you know, truthfully, doing this work and especially with everything happening at the federal level. Um, there are some efforts and we'd love to talk to you more about strategy. We worked on a, um, a plan to, to address family homelessness 10 years ago and made some successes. Other areas, we haven't gotten any traction on. We'd love to go over that, we should know about where we're at. But there are some other efforts happening. For instance, without even asking for funding, Christ Church Cathedral, one of our longtime partners, have been taking street overflow on particularly cold nights. And I just directly introducing them to Project Connect so that there is at least a short term thing, a solution on the coldest nights, not every night, um, for those families in cars. So those folks are talking. And so there's a lot of problem solving happening between the systems. And I just want you to, to know that.
And I appreciate that. And I'm well aware that stra- strategies to end homelessness can't do it all, even if you have a little partners. I remember watching on television and it was one young lady who was going in the woods to help people. And, and I didn't get her name, but there are many, many entities that are trying to help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I, I want to say one last thing related to s- strategies or, or approaches. Um, my under, my recollection from Kevin last time he was here was that some of the, a lot of the federal dollars that he receives can only be used for single men was, is my recollection or singles. And so it freezes out some of the family homelessness, uh, work that we can do. That is not true of county dollars though. Our county dollars are flexible. And so our dollars can be used for families in a way that some of the federal funding cannot. And so i- if, if there is that barrier there, I just want to make sure that we recognize that as a barrier and then respond as a county with funding that can be used differently than what strategies is allowed to do with federal funding. So that puts us in a different policy posture where maybe we're being, uh, we're giving more direction uh, about some of the funding that we provide, making sure that some of it's specific to families. Because as you, as we have all said, the numbers are growing. And if the feds' dollars can't be used for that, well then let's use the county dollars for that and be really intentional about it. I just want to offer that as, and I, cause I, I, I remember Kevin, uh, saying something like that. It's, it's unfortunate that he can't be here today. But anyway, just something to think about as we continue to think about funding through lev- indigent care or, you know, JFS or whatever the pots are from, um, from our vantage point. We, we need to be thinking about that as we allocate those dollars. So, okay. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. Uh, yeah, yeah. Thank you for the work that you do. All right, commissioners. Thank you all for being here. Uh, I am going to make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to artsy section 121.22G2 to discuss the acquisition of property.
Second. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.